Okay, as soon as we get a green light here, here we go. And have announcements been provided by the Communications Department to folks in the audience already?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. I missed that. All right, here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, 7:02 PM. And we're doing this meeting, as we discussed earlier, in a hybrid fashion, as has been our practice since during the days of COVID. You might be watching this meeting from home. You're certainly able to call in. We've got one public hearing matter tonight you can call in on. And then Community Comment, of course, is another opportunity for people to either call in or come up in front of the council if you're in chambers with us this evening. So if you're watching the meeting on cable TV or at edinamn.gov/livemeetings or on facebook.com/edinamn, feel free to participate in both Community Comment and the public hearing. With respect to Community Comment, now remember that it cannot be a matter -- you cannot address a matter that's otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, so keep that in mind as you come up to speak to the council about a matter of concern. And then there'll be a call-in number that'll pop up on the screen when it's time to proceed with Community Comment, and that'll come up fairly quickly in the agenda. Right after we approve the meeting agenda, we'll go to Community Comment. So having provided that information, let me call the meeting to order and ask Jennifer Garsky to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. And we have a form of meeting agenda that's been published. Is there anyone in the council or staff-wise that wishes to modify the agenda in any form? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved.
A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are at Community Comments, so let's -- we're going to have folks that are in the audience come up first, but let's make sure that that phone number's up on the screen for people that may wish to call in. I don't see it yet. The number is 786-496-5601. If you're at home and you want to jot this number down, here it comes. There's the conference PIN number. And then press star 1 to speak to an operator, and then the operator will bring you in to the council chambers, and then you'll be able to speak to the council. And remember, now as we come into Community Comment, it can't be something that's scheduled for a future public hearing or otherwise on the agenda this evening. So let's start with folks in the audience that wish to address the council on a matter that's of concern to them, not subject to those two excluded categories. Anybody wish to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Janet Katuie. I reside at 301 Adams Avenue, Edina, Minnesota, 55343. I am here today to draw attention to the racism that resides and thrives within the Edina City Council. As I stand before you, I am all too familiar with the status quo. Not only am I a woman, I am a black woman, a black woman standing before you, telling you a knee is being pressed on my neck by Councilwoman Caroline Jackson. Last week, I placed a call to Ms. Caroline Jackson. My intent was to gain insight and clarity to the decision to exclude me for the second time from the Planning Commission. I have been interviewed twice by Councilwoman Jackson, and twice I have failed to be appointed to this commission. The explanation offered both times is we received too many applications, and it was a tough decision, but thank you for applying. During our phone call, I specifically asked Ms. Jackson to explain what made the newest appointees stand out, what made them qualified, and what disqualified me. She dismissed my request, saying she did not have the notes, and they have been destroyed. However, before saying that her notes were destroyed, she did recall not only that I was trying to push a personal agenda. I was unprepared for the interview and did not specifically state I wanted to be on the Planning Commission because I believe my lived experience would inform the planning for the city of Edina for the next 50 years. I asked Ms. Jackson if any current member of the Planning Commission lives in the presidential neighborhood. I asked her if any is a single mother, or a black woman, or an immigrant on the Edina Planning Commission, because that is my lived experience. How is that not important to the future of this community? As she told me, I was angry. After sharing that I am not angry, that's how I responded, but a strong black woman feeling dismissed and disconnected. She disconnected the phone call. She called me, I was angry, and she hung up on me. Councilwoman has had ample time to look back and let me know the phone died or we had technical glitches. She's going to deny that she never hung up the phone call on me. That would be a blatant lie and an insult. If there was technical difficulties, she has had enough time to call me back and explain herself. Caroline Jackson has made it clear to me as a black woman, a single mother, an immigrant, and a resident of the presidential neighborhood. I am not deserving and does not have -- she does not have to answer to me. The question to Councilmember Jackson was, why was I not appointed? Was it because I had a personal agenda? Was it because there was too many applicants? Or was it because I was unprepared? Mayor Hovland, Councilmember Manager Neal, I ask, if I was a white taxpayer in this community, would Councilwoman Jackson hang up the phone on me? Would I still be described as angry? I ask, and I plead, and beg, and demand you lift the knee off my neck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katuie. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them in the audience? Okay. All right, let's turn to the folks that may be listening in virtually. Do we have anybody on the line that wishes to address the council?
I don't see anyone on the line right now, but I would recommend waiting one minute due to the delay in broadcast to see if anyone joins us. Is that okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Seeing it is 7:11, and we still don't have any callers, I believe it is safe to proceed.
Okay, good. Our usual practice this time of the evening, right after Community Comment, is to have the city manager respond to community comments from the prior meeting, but I think this matter that's been raised by Ms. Katuie is important enough for us to have a conversation about it here at the city council this evening. Caroline Jackson does not appoint people to boards or commissions in the city of Edina. It's done by the city council as a whole. The fact that Caroline Jackson may have been on the three-person interview team that interviewed Ms. Katuie twice might have just been serendipitous. The decision that the council made as to who went on the Planning Commission had nothing to do with race. In our community, we like to give people an opportunity to experience board and commission work. Janet Katuie's been a wonderful volunteer in our community. When we wanted to look at the issues of affordable housing, she was there. Excuse me, has served on other committees as well in the community, and we've really appreciated her participation. And presently serves on the Edina Transportation Commission. And so when we have somebody that applies for a different board or commission position and they're on an existing commission, there's, I think, at least for me, a natural reluctance to move somebody from one commission to another when you have people that are in the community that would like an opportunity to serve the town in some capacity. For example, this last session, we had, I think, 45 applicants for about 20 positions in the community. Some of them were on the Planning Commission, others were for other boards and commissions. So my recollection is that when we had the conversation about who to put on the Planning Commission, the fact that Ms. Katuie had been -- was indeed serving on the Edina Transportation Commission would have been influential with me. But I'll let others speak to their own experience. I think Councilmember Jackson will want to address those direct concerns that Ms. Katuie expressed and give her side of the story as well. I'll turn it now to Caroline Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've known Janet for a long time, and I've considered her a friend for a long time. And things have changed over the years, and that makes me sad. So first of all, I want to say, Janet, I'm sorry that the relationship is not as happy as it once was. And I've learned a lot from you, and I remember serving on a panel about immigration with you and really enjoyed hearing your stories and the fact that you kept bees when you were a young woman always sticks with me. And I know you always speak so passionately about affordable housing, and I always value your input on that. We are -- when we do interviews for the boards and commissions, it's considered an interview, and it's -- we kind of view that as employment data, and afterwards, we shred -- we're asked to shred our notes because it's private information. People fill out applications. And so I want to ask, you know, either Mr. Kendall or Mr. Neal, how much I can talk about the interview process without, you know, losing that privacy for Ms. Katuie?
Well, I think you could talk about questions we universally ask.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
Because you could --
I can talk about the process, for sure. So we asked all candidates the same three questions. The first one was, which commission do you want to serve on? Why do you want to serve on that commission? Or what's your top choice? And what do you bring to that? And so that was the first question that we asked Ms. Katuie. The second question is, I wrote it down, what's your working style? Do you like to work individually? Do you like to work in small groups, or do you like to work in large groups? And the third one is, can you tell us a situation where you faced conflict and how you resolved that? And then the final question is, sometimes we follow up on some of the comments if we want to learn more, and then is there anything else you'd like to add? And we ask that same question of everybody. And based on Ms. Katuie's answers -- and then what we do is -- so she answers the questions, and then when we go into a public meeting, which everybody is welcome to come and listen to, and we bring our top five candidates. I actually brought six candidates, and Ms. Katuie was not one of them. I interviewed probably 20 people, 20, 30 people. And of those, I had my top five and a sixth because I just couldn't say no to her. And then we present them, and then we put them on the boards. And so we don't go through each candidate and say yes, no, and this, that, and the other thing. And so she called up, and we had a conversation for about 30 minutes, and I did share that I had some concerns about some of her answers, and the conversation just did not go well. And I did hang up, which was not what I should have done. It was rude, and I apologize. So I'm not going to deny that, but at that point, the conversation was really not going anywhere, and I just didn't know what to do. And I made a mistake, and I apologize for that. I don't think -- and race never came into it. It came into the fact that she answered the questions in a way that was not as good as some of the other candidates that I interviewed, and I brought my top six candidates forward, and that was that.
All right, Manager Neal, did you have anything that you wanted to add about the process?
No, I was just going to -- the process this year was similar to the processes we've used last year. We had less candidates this year, but we had a strong, a very strong field, and it was -- it's always a difficult choice when we get into these, especially from a group, kind of a group dynamics process.
Member Rissler?
I do remain concerned that we do not have representation from many parts of Edina, and particularly the president's neighborhood. I know that that neighborhood is up for street renewal, I believe, the next year. I also know, and I have mentioned this a couple times, Alden Park, you know, I don't know, it doesn't seem like there's much there. And I think we, as a city, could do a lot better by President's Neighborhood, and I hope that there is some way we can move forward in that regard, because I do see that as necessary. I also think that's a neighborhood that is going to be so close to the light rail, and that's a real positive, in my view. And I think when I door-knocked that neighborhood, and I remember distinctly standing right on the border between Edina and Hopkins, and just thinking, this is not okay, because as I looked toward Hopkins, I saw sidewalks, I saw crosswalks, I saw infrastructure that I wished I saw on the Edina side. And it was just, I took a picture, and it stays in my head, and we need to do better. We have to do better. I also, this is another, we can't really do it with our form of city government, but I would, you know, I dream of an Edina where there is ward representation. I think that is something that we should have as well. Thank you.
Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, you know, a couple of comments. One, this kind of makes me feel a little uncomfortable, and so I'm just being transparent. Ms. Katuie raised an issue, shared two issues. One was of a personal nature, and then the other speaks to our process. And so I don't, it feels okay to me for us to talk about our process, because Member Jackson is right, that process is public. If anybody is interested in being on a board or commission, right, there's a process they go through. They can meet with MJ. MJ can talk through what the process is. The meeting that we have is a public meeting. We don't record it, but anybody is welcome to come, and it's publicized. But it feels like, to me, this feels inappropriate to me to address a personal issue. And so I don't know what our process is for that, but it feels, this feels inadequate to me to just talk about it on the council, the personal nature of it. And so there, I'm actually not sure how we should handle that, but I just wanted to make that point clear, that I think from a personal standpoint, it feels like we should be doing something even more personal and less public with the individual who brought this forward, Ms. Katuie. So I would offer that. And then the second thing I would say, unequivocally, I don't believe that our process for choosing commissioner, positions on commission is racist. Like, it would be hard for me to say, as I've gone through it twice, it would be hard for me to say that it's a racist process. I personally don't believe I've worked with anybody in the city or on council with someone that I believe is racist. And so I have to say that, but that doesn't mean what happened didn't happen, right? And so one of the things that I do believe, and I'm only talking about this because we created the space to have the conversation, I do believe systemic racism for all the isms, whether it's ageism, sexism, racism, they become systemic because there are paradigms that we make decisions within. And when they become systemic, we operate in that system, and sometimes people aren't even aware that they operate within that system. If you look at the data of the folks that we have added to commission, we actually talk about that. We actually say, do we have enough women represented? Do we have ethnicities represented? Like, we actually talk about those kinds of things because we care about addressing those metrics. We haven't done enough as a city to make as much progress as we want, but we do talk about those things. And so I believe that in our system, there are areas where we don't have enough representation. Member Rissler, I didn't want to call you by your first name. Member Rissler talked about one of those. And so I think we have to do better to shift and create paradigms that force us to ensure that we have every person in Edina represented, because today, we really, we don't. And so because it was raised, I will say I had my, I had a list of six people on my list, and I was, Janet was one of the ones on my list. And I don't, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but she was a person on my list, and in the discussion, it was clear that we had other candidates that we felt like were more qualified. And I do think, when we say more qualified, we are looking at a paradigm where we believe that having people that are subject matter experts in certain areas provide the best experience on commissions. I don't know that I agree with that, but that is the paradigm that we utilize, and because we make decisions within that paradigm, it causes us to have blind spots when we place people on commissions. We're never going to ask socioeconomic background, right? We're never going to ask questions like that of anyone, but I do believe that that is a blind spot that we have as a council, that we need to have a different level of representation across all of the commissions. And so that, I'll just close with, I do, I do think it warrants more than being on council to respond to Ms. Katuie. And I think that having the courage to come in here and stand there and give an eloquent representation and speech on how we made someone feel warrants more than just responding to it from the dais, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. I was just thinking about one of Member Rissler's comments, and of course, she's one of our new members on the council, and I can't remember if we talked about this in the selection process, but we do actually try to apply a geographic balance lens over everything. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but that's something to always keep in mind, I think, is that's what we do over at the Transportation Advisory Board, is the last step that we make over there in deciding how we're going to spend federal highway trust fund dollars is put a geographic balance lens on everything, and it's always helpful. One other comment, I think, Member Pierce said it well, that it is awkward dealing with personal issues in a public setting, and so intensely personal that it caused Ms. Katuie to feel she had to come here to talk to us about it in a public setting. So I'm more than willing to meet with Ms. Katuie in a private setting to understand maybe even more in depth what the things are that you're concerned about and see if we can deal with some of these things that are of a concern to you. So, and as I said, she's a longtime volunteer in the city of Edina and has served in many different capacities, and this is one where she wasn't chosen to serve, but I'm going to go back to Member Rissler first.
Oh, okay. To Ms. Katuie's point, and I really do think maybe we need to look at the questions that we're asking and think about writing new questions for the next time that we interview people for boards and commissions, to make sure that lived experience is one of the questions and really a focal point.
Yeah, good point. Member Jackson?
So I'll join you in the invitation if you want to meet with us together. I think that would be better. I'm happy to meet in person. It's always difficult over the phone, too, to have a good, meaningful conversation. And honestly, you know, like I said, I do value your input, and it's, you know, the Planning Commission is a difficult thing. It sort of is kind of a semi-political animal of itself, and people have come before us, other people applying for the commission, with an idea that it's kind of like a mini city council, which it really isn't. And I hope that the public thinks about the Planning Commission as a land use decision. And I, like I said, I do value the input that you've given in the past, especially on affordable housing, and, but I'd be happy to meet with you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, folks. Thanks for coming in this evening. Let's move on now to the consent agenda as the next matter before us. I take it nobody has called in. Oh, excuse me, Manager Neal has some comments. We usually get to those comments from the prior meeting.
And we did have one contributor at our previous meeting on March 7th, Andy Brown. And Andy was here speaking about the safety of railroad issues in Edina. We are starting to have that discussion internally about how, and then what locations within our organization and even externally that we could interact with them, and what could we learn. I've had a conversation with my colleague in St. Louis Park. They have had a railroad task force where they dealt with some of these issues. It's not a standing committee, but did have a chance to put together some policies on behalf of their city council, so we're going to take a look at, take a look at that as well.
Thank you. That cause any questions for Manager Neal? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. What my understanding is, is that we're going to take Item 6C off. We had a resident write-in about some of the water fee issues, and we're going to get an explanation of how the city made its computations. So is there anything else on the consent agenda that anyone on the council wishes to remove for individualized discussion? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of Item 6C?
Still moved.
Second. Had a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the items on the consent agenda with the exception of Item 6C. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, let's go to 6C. And Manager Neal, I think you wanted to talk about this.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll tee this item up, and we'll look for our Finance Director, Alicia McAndrews, who's going to join us remotely tonight. The item that's before you tonight is intended to be a technical correction to an error that was, that omitted a class of customers in our previous adoption of the ordinance setting fees for our utilities. And I do want to have, are we with Alicia yet?
I am here.
There she is. And I think I'll let her just say a few words about that and also cover the issue of how our utility rate structure, what changes we made to it, fundamental changes, and how those play out in our budget forecast for the upcoming year. Alicia?
Yes. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, members, for the opportunity to clarify this consent agenda item. If I could take us back a moment to the December If I could take us back a moment to the December 20th council meeting, council cast fee changes effective for 2023 for a variety of city services, including utilities. The changes requested were described in the staff report at the time and included implementing a new utility rate structure. And that rate structure was included in a 2022 rate study, which was conducted by ELLERS. They are the city's financial advisors. ELLERS and Associates have talented consultants that routinely work with the city of Edina and other communities to provide utility rate analysis and policy analysis. So the 2023 fee changes recommended in the ELLERS study are intended to meet the city's goals of recovering the costs of operating and maintaining the utility system, paying for investments in the aging utility system, and expanding its capacity, incentivizing water conservation in support of the city's climate action plan. And then it's also intended to make water and sewer more affordable for lower income or lower volume users. So if I could just share my screen to further illustrate kind of what Scott referenced. You can see here on the left, we have the proposed water consumption rates, what was the rate for 2022 and proposed rate for 2023. The fee that got missed was this $3.62, a flat rate for multifamily. On the right is the sewer fees that we had in 2022 and the proposed for 2023. Staff recently realized that the fee schedule that was passed in December did not accurately reflect the multifamily rate change or the sewer fee change. This was just a staff omission. So the fees that you see here are those that are recommended in the ELLERS rate study. They have been communicated to all customers. The agenda item before you this evening makes that technical correction to the 2023 fee schedule to reflect in code the intent here and the intent of the council action from December. Going forward, staff routinely meet internally and with ELLERS to review revenues and expenditures, usage patterns, capital needs, system changes, kind of all of those assumptions that we put into our rate study to see what's changed and see if our goals are being met. If not, you know, what changes are needed? And that happens in conjunction, of course, annually with our budget process. So here, I just wanted to show you kind of the estimated water usage that went into the revenue and fee structure as well for the sewer fees. And I'm happy to take any questions if members have any.
Member Rissler?
Yes, and looking at multifamily, the usage rate now for 2023 is a flat, $3.62. Then you have Tier 1 is $2.71, so it's less than that. Tier 2, $3.60, so it's a differential of 2 cents. Tier 3, over 49,000 gallons, is $5.63. And I can't help but look at this and see it as motivating more water usage. And my understanding is that we, the city of Edina, are known for our water usage and not necessarily in a good way, that we're higher than surrounding suburbs, and that we do share water sources with, I believe, St. Louis Park. I didn't have that much time to look into this, but I know that we did receive a letter from a resident who, Mr. Zickert, who is really digging into this and looking for information so that he can understand how these rates are functioning. And I'm wondering if there's, if there's any kind of problem with providing him with the information regarding multifamily that he needs? And also now, as I look at this and I think about it, as a councilperson, I feel like I do not have the information that I need in order to vote on this in an informed manner. And we are hearing so much about the need for us to make data-driven decisions. So I realize I rambled right there, but if you could respond to that, thank you.
Yes, I would say I, we are happy to provide the analysis that went into this rate study and the rate structures that you see here. And we're happy to sit down with council members to review this. ELLERS presented the rate study recommendations to council, oh, I believe it was back in July of 2022. So it's been a while. And then it came before council in December for actually passing into code. So we're happy to sit down and discuss the assumptions that went into it, the consumption-based assumptions in particular, and our revenue projections, if that would be helpful. And as I said, you know, this is a change from the past, and so we are expecting to see some behavior changes. We're hoping to. I mean, part of the goal is to incentivize lower consumption. So through our routine annual process of reviewing consumption patterns and revenues and expenses, if it warrants a change, that's something we'll look at in this next year as well.
I don't know how other council members feel, but I feel like at the moment, I do not have what I need in order to vote on this item in a responsible way. And I'm wondering if we could table this?
Ms. McAndrew, is there some urgency in setting the rates at this meeting versus next meeting and having an off, having a meeting in the interim, a personal meeting with Member Rissler so she understands the assumptions? And maybe for the rest of the council as well, to be able to explain in more detail the assumptions that went into the multifamily Tier 2, Tier 3?
Yes.
Or any of the other assumptions that were made that are concerned to Member Rissler? Manager Neil?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I think it's important, I know these rates were approved, Councilmember Rissler, before you were a member of council. So this is something that is kind of carrying, it is carrying over. I think it's important to know that we've done a pretty massive public communication about the new rate structure. So taking time to understand those rates is important, but making significant changes to them would really be, would really complicate our relationship with our customers. The other thing I would say is that these rates were intended, like all utilities are, these rates are intended to produce a behavior modification, and we really just haven't had enough time to see if that behavior modification really plays out. And that's part of what happens whenever you make a fundamental rate structure change. I would suggest we don't have an immediate, we don't have to act on this tonight for it to be effective, but I wouldn't let it last too long, because we are recognizing tonight that there's a technical correction that needs to be made.
Member Rissler?
Another question, and I tried to look this up in our code, and I couldn't find where I needed to go, but have we included the other rates for the commercial and industrial and the irrigation all metered in our code as well or not? Was it just multifamily that got left out?
Yes, it was multifamily, and I think it was honestly just a function of how the ordinance structure is set up. So it just got missed. And then the other change that's in this ordinance this evening is just clarifying the sewer change as well, because we made some changes to the winter quarter average that benefits residents, so I wanted to be sure that was captured accurately in the language of the ordinance. But the substantive one that was missed is the tier, or I'm sorry, the flat rate for multifamily.
And just to clarify, we can get the data that Mr. Zickert is requesting to him before we vote on this? And maybe, I don't know if it would save time if, and I don't know if that would work out, but I could meet maybe with him and you, and we could save your time.
He has the data. It's been provided.
With the email that he sent, it sounded like some of the data he had not received.
I have to say, with all due respect to Mr. Zickert, we're not relying on his analysis for how this rate structure is put together. We are relying on ELLERS and Associates, who've put a great deal of work into this and have decades, I think, of experience that we've relied on to help us make these decisions.
And to that point, I'm not questioning that. I am asking about whether a resident has received all of the data that he has requested through the open data practices.
Mayor, I would, I would just say, if he wants to submit a supplemental request, staff can analyze that. I don't, I'm not familiar with this issue. I don't know what's going on, but if there's any data he claims he's not received, that he wants to receive, he can submit a supplemental request, and staff can analyze data that's responsive to that.
If we have it.
My understanding is you would need to have that data in order to have created the budget or the projection, and that ELLERS would have had to have received it in order to have come up with all of this, that it's sort of foundational information.
I have provided through our data practices internal process, the rate study, this data that feeds into the rate changes to Mr. Zickert. If it hasn't yet made it to his inbox, I will double check, but it has been sent. So I can reach out to see if the data request has been satisfied and if there's anything else outstanding.
We have, I think, one point, and I'll look at Assistant Manager Schaefer. We have a point, a single point of contact in our, for our public data requests, and she wasn't at work today. Maybe it's caught up in her mailbox before it goes to Mr. Zickert. We can look at that, but I think that's a possibility here.
It's possible, I would say, unless it came in in the last couple of days, we have responded to it. I think some of the question might be, we respond with the data that we have. In this case, I think there was some analysis that was done on the part of the resident that is not the same kind of analysis that ELLERS did. So for us to be able to provide input on his analysis, I think, is where the confusion is coming in, because that's not something that we have the capacity to do, to analyze someone else's analysis versus the information that we received and have, we've already provided.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to take just a step back, because as I was reading through our packet, this is something that stood out to me as well. Just from the highest level that's within the introduction, it says, "The changes are intended to meet the goals of promoting water conservation, paying for reinvestment in an aging utility system, and expanding system capacity, and making water and sewer more affordable for lower volume customers." And so from my perspective, I was missing kind of that thread of how does reducing, it's increased for Tier 1, but then decreased across, it's increased for Tier 1 and Tier 2, and then decreased for Tier 3. And that's just for me where I wasn't completely understanding, if we're reducing for the higher volume users, how that is driving for water conservation? And so I just personally, if it's something that we're willing to do, I would value having a conversation, because I do trust a lot of the analysis that was done by our partner, that we trust to do this. But just as someone who is digging into the data, I just kind of want to understand how that connection was made.
Manager Neil, I mean, that's typically what we've done when we-
Is what we've done. So, but we did it back in November, right, or October of last year. So if we want to do that again, we would probably set up, we'd probably have to scuttle our work session, because this, it gets into a lot of depth in terms of the utilities, our water sewer, storm sewer, and all the underlying kind of behavioral philosophies that go with those charges, because that's really important to understand, to understand just what, the way you described it, Councilmember.
Yeah, you're causing me to think about that conversation we had last fall, so, which Member Rissler and Member Regno wouldn't have been able to participate in, or did not participate in. Member Pierce, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I, so I, I struggle with, the point about we use ELLERS, that is true, right? And they are doing the analysis. But I do think, just fundamentally, this becomes a challenge of someone sitting on council, all of us sitting on council. I don't have the expertise, and I'm never going to have the level of expertise that ELLERS has for this topic, nor the city leaders that manage this utility. And so as I recall us going through the sessions and asking the questions about how is it utilized for commercial, like, what is, give me examples of what kinds of usage that would be. I remember talking about watering your lawn, right? So we were able to talk about some of those examples. And so for me, I got comfortable with the construct that is being utilized to make the decision, actually, that we should have a tier rate. Going into the detail of what that rate is, I don't have the expertise there. And frankly, having the next session to go through it is not going to change my level of understanding at that point either. And then the other point, I do struggle again with us kind of bringing in some of this personal information into the dais. But we started talking about this email. I have no idea if the email, the data in this email is even accurate. And so by process, if I see an email like that, I forward it to the city, and I say, hey, what to make of this? Because I don't know if the assertions in there are accurate or not. And that has nothing to say against the resident, but I don't know. And so I'm, I'm, just on the principle perspective, am looking for the city to help me understand what in here is accurate, that we should be perhaps utilizing to help tweak a decision that we're making. But I rely on the city to do that analysis, and I feel confident, comfortable, having gone through the process that we went through, and we talked about rates in working session as well. So I'm comfortable with that. I did notice that there was an anomaly in the data that was presented, and so clarifying that, I think, makes sense. And I do think it makes sense to answer questions, and if we can do that outside of council, we should do that. I don't think we should take a working session to do that. We should, we should, anyone who's interested of going deeper on this topic should come to City Hall, just like I do, when I'm, I've been here probably three or four times to dig in on affordable housing, because I don't understand it. And the city staff has been very willing to spend time to do that, because it's their day job. I'm leaving my day job to come do that. So I would just recommend that we do it that way. And then the other thing I would suggest is, as often as we can, raising those things ahead of council so that we can provide options ahead of that as well. So that, that's just where my head is.
That's helpful, yeah. Manager Neil, one of the things that gave me pause that you mentioned was that to change the rate structure would be disruptive, because there's always been information disseminated. Is that what I heard properly? What does that mean? What have you done? What have we done?
We have, I can, maybe Ms. McAndrews can speak to the specifics of that, but we have informed our customers about the new rate structure and how it impacts them.
Yep. And but for the mistake of not including this, it would have been part of the original package that we passed.
That's right.
And it gets to be isolated and subject to analysis by folks, because it did appear in isolation, but-
Was that not communicated? Is the question.
Alicia, can you speak to that?
Yeah, was it not communicated? Was, yeah, the question.
I'm sorry, could you clarify, was what not communicated?
Was the new rate for multifamily going from a tiered section to $3.62, was that communicated to our customers?
Yes, it was. All of the 2023 rates you can see here have been on our website and we sent a letter to all customers.
So to that point, then, the customers know, we've done the analysis. And so there's questions about how we came to that rate. I think that that is, asking those questions and answering those makes sense to me. But again, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't use a working session to do that.
So the staff recommendation is that we approve this tonight is what I'm hearing?
It is, because we wouldn't recommend changing it at this point.
Member Jackson, any thoughts on it before we entertain somebody, you know, making a motion? Or do you want to make a motion?
I will make the motion. And I just, you know, the presentation we got is wonderful. And if we can just, you know, share that with our new members, that'd be great. And I felt fully informed, like Member Pierce said, last fall when we made this decision. So I will move item 6C off the consent agenda.
All right. Member Jackson moves adoption ordinance 202304, amending chapter two of the city code, setting fees for 2023 for the categories expressed in section 28-43B. Is there a second? All second for discussion? And now a discussion. Member Agnew?
Sure. I think I would echo Member Pierce's sentiment and I don't think that I need to dive through the data. The, the piece that I'm just looking to understand is how reducing the fee for the third tier of over 49,000 gallons leads to water conservation. So it's just about connecting those dots. And it could be as simple as a memo or an email or something like that, because I'm sure that there was a logic behind that and just looking to have those dots connected for me.
We can do that.
But I also understand too, that there is a majority of the council that was present at that previous discussion and, right, like the chips will fall how they do tonight. So.
Thank you, Member Agnew. Member Pierce, I'm going to go to Member Rissler.
I understand not wanting to confuse ratepayers. However, this point about reducing cost to such a degree and hoping that conservation is going to result is enough of a, I'll call it a red flag. And I want clarity on that before I vote on this. And I think if we vote on this tonight and then we find out that really we do need a tiered system, and yes, that could be uncomfortable, it could be confusing, it will take time if that is what we're looking at. But wouldn't it be better to explore this before approving and then having to go back? You know, let's, let's pause and reflect and, you know, really understand this. Because just in terms of common sense, this doesn't add up. And I, I am aware that Edina is a suburb that uses a lot of water. And that really does concern me. And I think, you know, we've got our climate action plan, we need to walk the walk. And, you know, this was brought forward. And yes, we can't, you know, always be second guessing things, but I think enough information was presented that it merits pausing.
Manager Neal, how, how often do we, we look at this annually, don't we?
Yes, we do.
All right. Member Pierce?
Yeah. So just a couple of things. One, I just, on principle here, what I heard Manager Neal say is that we could take the, I'll call it a pause. I'm not sure what Member Rissler meant is indigent when she says pause, but I'm going to use the same word, pause, for understanding of the construct of why the rates are what they are and how we think they're going to drive conservation. And it doesn't impact our ability to roll out these rates. We're not changing the rates, right? We've, that's set, right? And so if it's hard for me to vote yes for this on the consent agenda, given what we just talked about and the fact that, yeah, we can, we can take the time to review and understand it, to bring our, our new council members up to speed and then move forward without impacting the extensive work agenda that we have in front of us. If that is, if all of those are yes, yes, and yes, then I kind of think we should, we should do that. And so that's where, that's where I was coming from. It's not impacting, adversely impacting. I don't think it is unless you have a different, additional.
I don't have anything additional to say, other than we can set up that opportunity. We'll probably bring in Eilers and the, the folks who were integral to putting this together, provide that opportunity to learn, ask questions, and maybe bring our operational, some folks in to talk about that. And we can do that before, I think we could do that before our next council meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. A couple of observations. Member Jackson, do you have, go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm unclear on what you're leading to, or Member Pierce. Are you saying we table it for now to the next meeting or that we vote on it tonight?
Well, I thought I was clear. We shouldn't vote on it tonight. I'm, I wouldn't vote yes for it tonight.
Okay.
And I thought I was clear in why.
Oh, I, I understand your reasoning. I just-
Yeah, I, I would not vote yes.
It's for my own clarity. It's, yeah, thank you.
I would not vote yes for it tonight. If there was data that, I'm totally making this stuff up now, if we were talking about changing rates, which impacts the budget, which impacts revenue like that, I would, would say no, we should vote tonight for it. But my understanding is that that is not the case. The rates are not changing. We're just going to take a pause to make sure everybody's on the same page as to how we came to this construct and these rates. That's what the, in my mind, when I define pause, that's what we're pausing to do.
A couple of observations, and I'm prepared to go along with this notion of holding it over for a couple of weeks. But when, when decisions are made by other councils and other presentations are made to other councils, and then we change direction based on new council members coming in that are questioning what was done by a prior council, I don't know if that's such a good idea. Understanding what somebody did is really important. And Ms. McAndrews, that's your job. You know, so you've got two council members here who, three of us were part of that particip, part of that conversation, but two weren't. And they, they're sitting here tonight saying they don't, they still don't feel comfortable understanding how. They can connect the dots on the rate structure being presented represents an effort to reduce water consumption for high users. And that, that should have been explained to them, and it wasn't. So that's, that I see as your job to do here, or somebody's job to do if we have this as part of a short part of a work session and the meeting coming ahead. So if Member Jackson withdraws her motion, I'll withdraw my second because we had a good discussion about it. And we'll move, we'll move to a different kind of motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I withdraw the second. And is there a motion to hold the discussion over on item 6C ordinance 202304, amending chapter two of the city codes, setting fees for 2023 under chapter 28-43B? Is there a motion to set that over to the next meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Member Agnew, second?
Second.
Member Rissler? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion of state, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Thank you. All right. We've got one public hearing matter this evening. And this involves, what I think is going to be a request by our community development director, Director Teague, to use the methodology that we've been using. This involves U.S. Internet and the request to construct a building on Xerxes Avenue. And I think that we're going to leave this matter open as we have for public testimony up to a date certain and then take it up at the next council meeting. But I'll let, I'll let the community development director, Teague, address that issue in the context of making the staff presentation with regard to the U.S. Internet request. And then we've got some folks here as well from U.S. Internet that are going to assist in this matter. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located in the greater Southdale district on the west side of Xerxes, just north of 66th. The home was originally, the structure on the site was originally built as a duplex, same as all of the structures to the north. Back in 2007, the duplex was remodeled into an audiology clinic, and that used has operated out of the building until the time U.S. Internet purchased it. At that time, in 2007, there was a rezoning of the site to planned office district and the site was reguided in the comprehensive plan also. So again, the site is zoned, planned office district, and guided for community activity center. What the applicant is proposing to do here is build an 18-foot tall, 1,900-square-foot utility building. The facility would provide internet service to all Edina residents. Currently, U.S. Internet only has area that it covers in the northeast corner of the city. The applicant's going to show the council some maps on their coverage today versus what this building means to the city for coverage. Again, it would cover the entire city of Edina. Note that the building on the screen doesn't have any windows. So a couple of variances are required, are being requested here to have a no, a no-window building and to have an eight-foot band. The first eight feet of the structure would be cultured stone. The, within this planned office district and all of the Southdale district requires any front-facing facade toward the public realm, so toward Xerxes and toward the north where a proposed sidewalk is going, would have to be all brick or stone. And they're proposing that eight-foot band. Initially, the proposed building was 20 feet tall in height in order to meet that 20-foot first-floor ceiling requirement. Council may have noticed in our Better Together comments, there was concern about the mass and height of the building. The applicant was willing to reduce the height down to 18 feet. And when the planning commission considered this as part of their motion to recommend approval, had that condition in as well. So the renderings that you're seeing on the screen here reflect that 18-foot height. Another condition that was put on, and this was recommended by the engineering department, was for the existing sidewalk along Xerxes to become a boulevard-style sidewalk. So that is shown here. And again, over on that side of the site. So as I mentioned, they are proposing an east-west sidewalk through the site. Another condition in the planning commission's discussion was for this sidewalk, as it's proposed here, just leads straight into an apartment building to the west. So the suggestion was to angle this to the south to connect to an easement that the city acquired as part of the Millennium Development to the west. And I'll show a graphic of that in a second here. So the applicant has already made a couple of those adjustments, as mentioned. This is what that south-facing sidewalk would look like. It actually would need to extend a little bit further down in order to, to connect to that easement. So the graphic that you're seeing here, here's the site that we're looking at. Within the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, there was talk of connecting 65th. So 65th essentially ends here, and the thought was to connect it into Richfield in this location here. So as part of the Millennium project, we, the city, acquired a 20-foot easement for some type of connection purposes. As we've looked at this and staff has analyzed, what is the likelihood of 65th to actually go all the way and connect with 65th? Oh, we're, given that Xerxes is a county road, and note that there's a bend here, there's concern about sightlines in making this connection. And Hennepin County is not, they'd rather reduce connections to their roads rather than adding them. So the likelihood of that connection, that the county approving it, not so much at this point. There's also a number of buildings that are, that would be located in the way if that street were to be constructed. There's an office building here, there's some garages for the apartment, and of course, the structure that we're looking at this evening. One, one solution that engineering has mentioned is if we want to make that 65th connection to Xerxes, one way to do it, and again, it depends on redevelopment of these sites here, would be to extend the street to connect to York. And then York would provide access up to 64th and over to Xerxes. But the idea about the request before us is to connect this sidewalk for a potential sidewalk extension to the west. The applicant is proposing an extensive landscaping around the site. The, these trees here would likely, would have to be relocated for boulevard-style trees. That could be determined at the time of a building permit, when that, when that landscaping could be determined by the, the city forester. So this request requires a conditional use permit in the variances that I mentioned. The site is code compliant in terms of setbacks for the proposed building and height. The conditional use permit criteria, staff believes that that is met. This would not have an adverse impact on governmental facilities. The project wouldn't generate traffic within the streets. There would be only one employee on the site. The idea is not to have customers go to the site, so much less traffic compared to the audiology clinic. And again, with the exception of the variances that are required conforms to our ordinance. Private utility buildings are a conditionally permitted use within all zoning districts of the city. So the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well. One interesting note, if this property weren't rezoned and it were, existed today as a duplex, no variances would be required because in our two zoning district, we don't have those building material requirements or the, the 75% window opening on public-facing streets. But because it was rezoned to office, those variances are sought. So the primary issue is, is the conditional use permit and the variance reasonable for this site? Again, we believe the conditional use permit findings have been met. Staff believes the variances are reasonable, given the utility nature of the building and the need for security. Don't want to invite people around the site to, to have no windows will add security to the equipment within the building. And again, the reduction in the, the height of the building would minimize those impacts for neighbors. Landscaping far exceeds our city code requirements, and that pedestrian sidewalk can add connectivity to the, to the area in the future. And the proposal would improve and expand internet service to Edina residents. We did receive a number of comments on Better Together. I mentioned a few of them. Concern over the mass of the building, height, noise. The applicants have assured us that this would, the site would not generate noise. We talked about the 65th extension, and one comment said that windows would be a must. The planning commission considered this request last week at their meeting. A motion to approve the project failed on a vote of four to four. Three of the conditions that were suggested have been included in the resolution that's before the council for approval. That includes that east-west sidewalk and the connection to the south, the height of the building be reduced to, or have a maximum of 18 feet. And another, another condition that was added is in regard to the landscaping. If the project is approved and any landscaping in the future dies, the property owner is responsible for replacement, subject to approval of the city forester at that time. Within your packet is a resolution for approval of the conditional use permit and variance. There's also a resolution for approval of the conditional use permit, but denial of the variances if you feel that the building should be constructed of entirely brick on those public-facing facades and that that, that window requirement should be required as well. But the asked- as well. But the ask this evening is not to make a decision, but simply to close the public hearing at noon on March 27th and continue action to April 4th. I will stop there and answer any questions you may have, and the applicants are here to make a presentation as well.
Yeah, thank you, Director Teague. Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Member Pierce?
Can you just clarify, so the, it failed four to four, and then, but then you said, but the issues either for all of the four or some of the four, you went through the things that are now included that were issues that they raised. Can you just go through that list again, please?
Yes, certainly. Let's see. So this, yeah, this graphic might show it. So one of the conditions was this sidewalk connection should be extended to the south so it can connect to that easement. Let's see. So it would connect to this easement area. So in this location here. The second condition was the reduction in the height of the building to no taller than 18 feet. And the third is in regard to the landscaping. There's a specific condition in there that says any landscaping that's proposed on the, the landscape plan, if that were to die in the future, they would, the property owner would be responsible to replace that landscaping.
Okay, thank you. And it was your question, whether those three conditions now applied at the city council level satisfied most or all of those people that were dissenting?
Right, that, yeah. Yeah, was the implication of why I was asking, yeah.
Yeah, some of the concerns, those that didn't support the, the motion, concern about the building materials, that, that we should follow the, the solid brick on the east and the north side. The windows were a little bit mixed there. Some just didn't like the use in this location itself.
All right, thank you. Member Risher?
I did listen to the planning commission, and one of the concerns was that the future land use is community activity center, and just for the public, that kind of threw me for a loop because it's not in our code, and I did find it in our comprehensive plan, and it's, it's kind of a mixed bag thing, as I understand it. So future use could be retail, office, lodging, entertainment, residential use combined or in separate buildings. So, and again, the use that's being requested is one that is allowed in every single one of our zoning districts. So for me, I was kind of, what, what I started thinking of is that maybe we don't, as a community, understand what this concept of community activity center means. And also, it sort of made me realize that, in a way, this is the perfect buffer project to go right next to residential and then more development, because you could, you know, have anything go right up next to a house. So that was not something that came up during the planning commission. The other thing that it reinforced, and I know I've talked about this before, but we have design guidelines that are kind of for one type of function, and that is a building where it makes sense for people to look into windows. And I think we need to address this because it does not suit this building. It is completely opposed to its function, you know, and anyway, it would be great if we could somehow find a way to address that. I like the fact that they've reduced the height. I did actually visit the building that's on Snelling today, couldn't hear any noise. So, anyway.
Thank you, Member Risher.
If I could comment, I appreciate the comment about the 75% and the 20-foot ceiling height. Since we've adopted that ordinance, it has proved to be, I don't want to say, well, problematic for developers. They don't like the 20-foot ceiling height, and just meeting the 75% windows in the front has been a challenge really for, for every project. So staff would welcome a look at that code as well.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? One question I have for you is you mentioned that the U.S. Internet facility would serve all of Edina, and we've been looking for a competitor for, for Xfinity, for Comcast. Would it also serve the purpose of serving Richfield from this facility? Or is that a question you want me to ask the applicant?
Yeah, if memory serves and looking at the maps at the last meeting, it would. But they will have a map that shows not only Edina, but our surrounding communities as well.
Okay. And you've got some folks here from U.S. Internet that are going to speak to us, and who's here?
Yes, they've changed the team on me, so I believe, I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right, okay. Thank you, Director Teague.
Thank you. How do I?
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to the Edina City Council. My name's Tim Martin. I'm the CFO of U.S. Internet, and along with me tonight is our architect that did the work on the building here, another Tim, Tim Meyer from Meyer Group Architects. So we look forward to talking through this with you this evening. So just a little bit of background. U.S. Internet, we're a local company, actually founded about 28 years ago by a couple of South Minneapolis guys that unfortunately are traveling right now and can't be here in person, but locally owned. We started putting fiber into Minneapolis around the 2010 period, and we've covered much of South Minneapolis, have four ways into St. Louis Park, a little bit of Dyna so far, and around our headquarters in Minnetoka. What's interesting is people ask why Edina. As we've kind of built in Minneapolis along Xerxes and France, there's been one side of the halves, which is in Minneapolis, where they're able to get U.S. Internet, and then the other side of the street is Edina, where we've got numerous requests, not only there, but throughout the city. When is U.S. Internet coming? And we would like to come and build out the city. Where we're at today, this is our coverage map, which is actually, we publish online as well, so it's publicly available. The green is our, our live fiber area, and you see much of South Minneapolis is covered. We also have covered portions of St. Louis Park serviced by a facility off of Gorham Avenue. You do see Councilmember Riser where the Snellie building is, which you visited earlier today. This, we've also started building in the Morningside area of Edina as well, that little sliver there. But from our service out of Gorham, we cannot service all of Edina out of that. This facility at Xerxes will allow us to service the rest of Edina, much of central itself. That is the reason for this building. It would be a significant investment we'll make in Edina, but we need a facility to service it out of. Our construction process is underground. We do directional boring up and down both sides of the street. As houses or buildings subscribe, we run a lateral to the building. It's an individual fiber strand, each building, and all that fiber individually run back to a central office. That central office, here's an example off of our Snellie location, which you visited. So again, no windows in this facility. The left side is the front-facing view. The right picture is the inside view. This is a data center. It's got numerous electronic equipment, servers, switches, optics, fire suppression units. Heavy investment in all of our fiber comes back to this data center. It's very important that this is a secure facility. That's why the reason no windows, whether it's physical access or environmental, through weather, what have you. This building has to be secure, and when this is up and running, this is your telecommunications hub. You don't want access there, and when stuff happens, you want this really to be protected. So again, we've purchased this building off of 64th and Xerxes in October of last year, and this wasn't the first building or location we looked at. We've been looking for a couple of years to get into Edina. We've worked with the city. There, and as you were, there's just not a lot available, sort of thing. So we didn't have many choices to begin with, so, but we found this choice, talked to the city prior to purchase, and that it would work. And our plan is to raise existing facility and then build this slab-on-grade 1,900-square-foot facility. And kind of as Director Teague had mentioned, we believe we've met all conditions of the utilities building and structure code to grant the conditional use permit. Just a couple more. These are similar to the pictures you already saw, looking from the west from Xerxes, looking to the north, and then looking south. And again, the city had requested that we put this sidewalk in across the property for some access to Xerxes from the west and what have you, so we've put that into our plans to make this also work for the city. Here's just a top view, overhead view. So again, as we look to build out Edina and put fiber across the whole city, we need a building to bring this back to. This building is off of Xerxes, so our request is that we, you grant, and I know that won't happen tonight, but you grant the conditional use permit. And again, the two variances we've asked for is one, the windows, and this is all about security. This is a telecommunications hub, a utility building, and again, it is unmanned. I know I spoke and we'd have one employee. We will have no one stationed there. However, as, in the early days of this, as we pull fiber into the building, as we light up new customers and that, there will be individuals that will visit the building, but ongoing in later years, other than our security reviews and that, people visiting once or so a week or any sort of maintenance, this will be an unmanned facility. And then lastly, the use of materials, where we landed at these materials was essentially working with the city and really the other development in the area. So it wasn't like we just kind of off the cuff. It was really looking at the other development and looking at color schemes that fit to really match that, and that's why we think it's a good fit for that area. And also the landscaping, it's more green space that's currently there, adding more trees, and we've really tried to make it because it is kind of right on that Richfield-Edina border, that the landscaping does have an inviting basis and not just a big concrete box in the middle of a city lot, sort of thing. So with that, I do thank you for your time, and I guess we'll pause there for any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, thank you for that presentation. Questions for Mr. Martin? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions. One is, I see you're not putting solar on, and I, if this is a data center, it's going to be using a lot of energy. Can you walk us through the decision not to put solar on top of this building?
Well, it's just the, the amount of power, and then also the constant use of power. Solar was just not an option to, to power this, to power this facility, and that was the reason.
Okay. The second question I have is, I went down and looked at it, and it just, it just kills me. You can see the park, and the easement would go right smack through where any building could go. But I just wondered, the orientation of the building, it's kind of a north-south rectangle. Did you consider an east-west rectangle, or is it just, that's the best way to put it on there?
And I'll let Mr. Meyer as well talk to this, but the orientation of the building, we're matching the existing footprint exactly and not extending or going over that. The other thing that we did inquire to Engineer Milner is there's some city infrastructure underneath that building, so it was safest to keep that footprint the same, and then you start changing the footprint, it could get into different variances, and then I, my, my two variances may become more than that. And to be candid, we're trying to reduce the number of variances and ask, and really to tie into kind of the existing codes. But Tim, is there anything else?
Sure. I first, I'm Tim Meyer, principal architect with Meyer Group Architects, Rada Duluth Ashland, and as of March 1st, Minnetoka, Minnesota. We've actually been working on this project going back three years ago, and we had worked with Kerry and others with the city, trying to find a site in Edina. So this, the site on Xerxes was not one that we came to without a lot of consideration of other sites within the city, so this has actually been a fairly long process. We've been working on developing the design for the Xerxes site for about a year now. So this, like Tim had mentioned, this is not something that has been thrown together at all. Was mentioned that your Community Development Director Kerry Teague and Chad Milner, we've worked with him on the engineering side, and then Bill Nuenendorf, we actually spent a lot of time with Bill. I remember one meeting where we basically looked at almost every building in the neighborhood to try to develop a language for this building that we felt would be sensitive to the neighborhood and sympathetic. We know how prominent this location is when you come into Edina on Xerxes, and so it's with a lot of consideration that we have presented the design that we have tonight, and it certainly, we feel, will be probably one of the most beautiful CO buildings we've done with U.S. Internet. As you've probably seen, some of the other locations, they're a lot more utilitarian, but because of this site, we have worked really hard to make sure this will actually be, I think, very beautiful. You notice tonight, some of the landscape architecture design work done by Damon Farber from the Twin Cities here is really beautiful, and as Kerry mentioned, really exceeds the requirements of landscape design for the city planning requirements. So I'm actually, I'm really proud of the work that we've done here, and we've worked really hard with Kerry. Kerry's worked hard for us to try to come up with something that we felt would be as sensitive as possible in the neighborhood. The other thing I wanted to state here too, and Tim didn't, didn't mention this in his presentation, these buildings are, they need to be in a certain geographic location within the cities, and that's one of the challenges we had and why it took so long to find a site in the city of Edina to locate this facility, is that for technology reasons, it needs to be in certain proximities relative to the fiber network. And so that was a challenge that we've worked on literally for the last three years to find a site that works technically for the new network and with the work we've done lately to be sensitive to the other buildings in the neighborhood. One question on, on whether we'd angle or staying perpendicular to the street. Some of that had to do with some of the existing rhythms with the, the residential part of the neighborhoods there as well. And then Tim had mentioned the, we have a sewer line that actually runs through the site that we have worked close with Chad on to ensure that that won't be, there won't be issues with access to that in the future. So, so if there's any other questions, but hopefully that helps clarify kind of how we got to be where we are.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I'm looking at this for, is this a 100-year building? So 50 years down, 50 years down the line when everybody's walking everywhere, and all of a sudden, you know, you can see the park, but you can't get there. And so that's, that's where I'm coming with my question. So I appreciate the answer. I have one other question that is, because this is unmanned, does that mean it does not have bathroom facilities in it?
It actually does have, by code, does have bathroom facilities. Tim Mayan mentioned that there will be people who will visit the facility occasionally, do an installation work and that, but it will not be, you know, certainly nothing that would increase the volume of traffic or even pedestrian traffic in the neighborhood.
I think one of the questions that the planning commission had was the ability to water the trees. So I was going to, whether there was going to be plumbing there or not, I think was sort of the, the purpose of my question.
Yeah, there'll definitely be plumbing there, and in addition, kind of as you saw, well, you don't see with all the snow on the ground at Snellie. We do have kind of the trees and shrubs there. We do have maintenance crews just as far as our construction efforts when we do underground boring. We do do yard repair and that, so we have watering facilities just within. So we have watering facilities just within staff, so we will most definitely keep the stuff alive and living, sort of thing.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Yep, Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you wouldn't mind toggling back to the coverage map, I have a question specific to that. So when looking at this, specifically the Gorham site, and seeing the coverage that is enabled because of that site, I'm not making the connection how having this particular site on Xerxes will also enable the entirety of the blue area that's highlighted to be a part of the coverage map. And so maybe it has to go into like the scientific elements of how fiber works, but if you could just speak to me of how, kind of comparing the two, how we'll receive more coverage from this site compared to the site to the north?
Yeah, thank you for that question. In a perfect world, we'd have a site right in the center of Edina. Such a site that we could acquire and put a building on, we weren't able to find, sort of thing. And the question is then, do we wait for it? Or do we find a site such as Xerxes and do construction and then go all the way west to the western borders of Edina from that site? That's the decision we've made. So we will run fiber from Xerxes all the way to the western edge and up north. Gorham will cover certain sections of the north, but it's just too far of a run for Gorham to cover all of Edina. So without this building on Xerxes, we would, we wouldn't be able to complete the Edina build.
So you are confident that the entirety of the blue area of Edina will be covered by this site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Additional question, and maybe Mr. Milner will give me an eye on this one, but is it possible for something like this to go underground? Maybe not even necessarily at this site, because I do understand that potentially impacts underneath it, but could this site be embedded underground?
That's a very good question, something I've, I guess we haven't contemplated, sort of thing. But still, it would be, you would still need a facility or land to put it underground, right? And then what would go on top? And then what would be the advantages of building it underground versus slab on grade with a single level? So it would be interesting thing to, I guess, ponder, but my sense is the cost and then also, one thing with running fiber, our pipes are underground. And then when we come into buildings with it in our central office, it comes up. So that prevents water from coming in. You have open pipes with fiber into a building underground. My sense is, we haven't done the research, but that would be a water penetration point, and suddenly do you run a risk of a building filling up with water? And then in that building, it's a data center with a lot of electronics, and the last thing you want around electronics is moisture. Moisture, dust, things like that. So, and again, I'm not an engineer. Chad would probably be a better one, but my sense is those would all be potential hurdles versus what we've historically done and it's worked for us, a slab on grade, the single level, and put these buildings like we have designed here.
And I can speak to the sewer pipe that goes right underneath this building. There's no room for them to even consider going underground if they wanted to. So there's a sewer pipe that serves this whole district and up to Pamela Park, and it runs right down the center where the 65th Street potentially could have went under the building. So there's no capacity underground.
Okay, thank you. And that was really just something that came to mind as Member Jackson was, you know, commenting on the park there and as we're thinking about connectivity and even to Member Rissar's point as well of like, what does a community activity center really mean? And just thinking about continuing to think, leaving those options open. And then I guess final, and this is maybe like the most nitpicky of the questions, so that's why I left it for last, but why is the sidewalk so squiggly?
I'd have to call the landscape architect and ask them. It was just purely, they thought it looked nice or was more interesting than a straight run of concrete. So it is, you know, the whole landscape design, we were trying to elevate the level of design, and that's purely, so it's purely subjective, I guess, on why we did.
Much better than a finance guy trying to answer that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jackson, what's the park? What's the park you're referring to?
Oh, Sheridan Park in Richfield.
Oh, in Richfield, Richfield Park?
Yeah, but it's, I would call that the neighborhood park. You can see it right there. You look, the front door of the Odiology Clinic, and you can see the park. It's like, it's a very short distance away, but you know, Xerxes is just such a river of cars that you don't feel connected to it. But I'm thinking in the future that, you know, 100 years in the future, that'd be different.
We won't be making that any better, right, with this.
Correct.
And it's unlikely that county would allow us to do anything with 65th Street, that's what.
In 2023. But in 2070, they might be saying, why didn't somebody ask this? This building's been here for 70 years or for 50 years, and it's right smack in the way that we could get to the park. So I have to ask the question for future councils.
We should have bought the Odiology Building if we thought that was an opportunity, and we had a time when we could have done that. Manager Neil, another point?
Just, the only other point I'd like to, two points actually, I'd like the council to understand. When we had our initial sort of corporate get-to-know-you visit with USI, geez, four or five years ago, probably by now, one of the things we talked to them about was the possibility of locating this head end or the, you don't call it a head end, what do you call it? A CO.
Central office.
Central office, in a way that could serve Richfield as well. So the fact that they, they found a location for it that would serve Edina and be able to serve Richfield is a benefit to the neighborhood, to the greater neighborhood. The other question I, or the other point I'd say is worthy of consideration when thinking about compromises in a conditional use permit, is the, the scale of the economic impact of USI coming into Edina is really incredible. I mean, this could save Edina residents hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in, in high-speed internet fees. We've, you've all probably gotten emails from people about why can't we bring in a new competitor to Comcast? That's really not our responsibility as a city, but they have come to do that, and we already see it making a market impact. The fact that they're here, and Comcast knows they're here, and the streamers, the T-Mobile and Verizon know they're here as well, it's having a discernible impact on, on the costs of those, of those very critical services to, to our residents. So I think it's worthy of considering when you think, when you think your way through this item.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Just one quick question, I think probably for Mr. Meyer, maybe Mr. Martin, but so we've got this ordinance that is posing a little bit of difficulty because we require 75% of it being glass, but we also talk about the use of metal stone as additional materials. Now, you've chosen to use EPHS encultured stone, and that takes us into, at least for me, an area where I get a little bit of discomfort, because we don't see much of that in our community. And the reason we have the code that uses those natural, or asks for those natural materials plus glass and metal is because those are the, those are the products we believe in. And so convince me that I should believe in your products.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, in having, I've been in architecture for 36 years now. I actually started my career around the time when EPHS just began, you know, it was kind of this miracle material that everybody was trying out and using. And so it's been around for a while now. A lot of the weaknesses are actually around openings and penetrations where moisture's had the ability to get, get behind that outer coating. So the systems are actually a lot more advanced now. I think we understand EPHS a lot better now than, than we have in the past. So we, we know how to detail it better, I think, than, you know, the reputation of it with some of the failures it's had in the past. The other thing I was going to mention, we did as of today, had put together a brick option that we, we haven't forwarded it to Carrie yet, but we have the north and east sides of the building, we've looked at a brick option as well, and then looking at either EPHS or metal panels or something on the other two sides. But we have that as an option as well that we'll send to Carrie, that that came, you know, out of some of the Planning Commission discussion, so we have, have that option to share.
Good, yeah.
I was going to respond to, to your point on sort of the timeliness of these buildings that Bill Nuenendorf actually shared with us, some 70-year-old, I believe they were lift stations or other structures that were designed by architects from back in the 50s. And it was sort of a lesson in how permanent these things really are. And at the time, you know, this is actually an award-winning architect who had designed these small structures. It's sort of a lesson in how long these things can be around and how permanent they really should be. So, so we did, we have taken that very seriously into consideration with the design work that we've done for this building. I can tell you, it's, this one is head and shoulders over some of the other structures that we've done with Tim and US Internet and other locations, so.
All right, good. Member Pierce has a question.
So just a couple of points. One, I think it would be really good for the next time, when you come back, what you're hearing is questions around the council trying to kind of rationalize a commercial building that is a, you know, selling retail and a data center. So I'm an IT guy, I would never put windows in a data center. And so, but we do have code, and so we have to be able to explain those things. And so where I'm going is, I think it might be, I think it would be beneficial to not only talk about what's in the code, but then say, okay, but in a data center, I'm making these numbers up, but you should do the work. In a data center like this, it's extremely rare, if not almost impossible, of a certain class of data center to have windows, and here's why.
Yeah, that's, it's a good thing to bring up. We actually worked really closely with Carrie on this point early on. We actually, the early versions of the building had windows. We actually had run a corridor along the Xerxes side of the building and put windows into the building, which was a little dishonest because you weren't seeing into the data center part of the building, but it did meet the letter of the code in terms of transparency. So.
And by doing that, it's more expensive to keep it cool, right? We have to keep a certain temperature inside. And so all of those, those types of differences between a data center and a commercial building versus somebody who's selling books or whatever.
Right.
So I think it would be helpful to, to bring those types of examples to the council. I do know of a couple of data centers that are underground, but that is even rare in many instances as well because of the expense. You have to fortify that differently than if it's sitting above ground. So those types of things, I think, could be beneficial for the Planning Commission to understand some of the differences in what we're describing here as well as the council. So I would encourage you to, to bring back some of that data and use those examples the next time.
Yeah, I would say the decision to take the windows out of the building was purely security. And as you know, any tier-one facility, no windows whatsoever would be allowed. And, you know, this is, this is a masonry structure, and security is a primary concern with the structure. Just was make a point on, in terms of underground, an underground facility, my concern wouldn't be the initial construction of the facility, it would be longer term in terms of, like Tim had mentioned, penetrations below grade or deterioration, long-term of materials or seals and things like that, that, you know, they'd be a primary concern in terms of the maintenance. There'd be a cost and some difficulty with that. Moisture and this type of building, they don't mix well, so.
Yeah, so if you were to do that, you'd have to construct a very different building, is my, my point. And to just help everybody understand that could be beneficial. And then the other question I have is, just for trivia purposes, you mentioned that you pull a single strand to every address that wants fiber. So how many homes does this serve? How many strands of fiber are you going to have in there?
You know, this will be, you know, I was thinking about that, that would be a potential question. It's, it's more than 10,000, it's probably more than 10,000 individual fibers, probably in that 10,000 to 25,000 individual fibers we're bringing. The reason we bring an individual fiber strand, which is totally unique, there's, I don't know if there's, there's not many, if any, that do this. This makes our product really future-proof. As bandwidth continues to build and people require more, our fiber, one fiber can power a small country. So all we have to do is switch the optics on the end of the fiber and potentially the electronics. So what it does is really future-proofs the infrastructure that we're putting into this. And likewise, we were one of the first companies that ever offered 10-gig service. We have two residents in South Minneapolis that have 10-gig service, where our standard products will continue to be increased to, you know, offer more and more bandwidth, and a single fiber strand does that for us, which a lot of the competitors, when all their neighbors are watching or streaming TV, you get buffering and things like that because they're bandwidth constrained. You do not, there's no bandwidth constraints on our network.
So I asked that question because when you think about, as we talk about the future city, right, that, these are the kinds of services that we need to have available to start really projecting into what those smart cities will look like. We have to have the capacity to be able to drive that. And so, yep, I, I love the park. I would, and I know we can't do this, I'm just saying this to be provocative, I would move the park before I would, if there's no other place to have this fiber unit, to have this service available, I would move the park before I would not take the opportunity to lay in this kind of fiber for our community. I'm just making that provocative point.
Yeah, especially since it's in Richfield.
It's easy, easy.
All right, thank you. You keep asking questions because you're really helping educate us.
I'm done.
All right, okay. That cause any other council members to have questions for these gentlemen? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for testimony now from the public. And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? Gentlemen, you can stand by here. You can sit down and relax for a minute if you want. Anybody from the fire department want to comment and testify on this? All right. I'm going to go down to Lauren Sebenoller and ask her, Lauren, do we have anybody online that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
We do not have anyone online at this time.
All right, we'll take your advice and wait a minute. You let us, you let us know.
Sounds good. I'll come back at 8:51.
All right, thanks.
It is now 8:51, and I believe it is safe to proceed. Thank you.
All right, very good. Staff is recommending that we adopt a motion to close the public hearing at noon on March 27, 2023, and continue the action on this matter to April 4, 2023, that meeting of the city council. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? All right, good. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us this evening.
Good night.
Yep, we'll see you on the 4th of April.
Thank you.
All right, reports and recommendations is the next portion of the agenda, and first matter there is Resolution 2023-. matter there is Resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty three, accepting donations on behalf of the city. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion second, a motion by a member Pierce, second by a member Jackson to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty three, accepting donations on behalf of the city. Vina, any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And we've got some nice donations in this particular resolution to the Edina Senior Center from Cassia, which is a company that came in from Eden Prairie a couple of years ago, into the Commercial Industrial District west of one hundred there. Lunch for twenty people, take home, take in knowledge, take home lunch. Part two. And then Alina Health and Aetna had a jigsaw puzzle competition that they sponsored, that's a senior center, senior communities guide, lunch for thirty people. Had some good things going on over there. And Home Instead, seventy two mini pies. And that was, those are all generous in kind donations. So they'll all be posted as donors on the website. Let's go back now to the main part of the agenda and that continuation of that particular section of the agenda. And the next matter we have here is, and the final matter in this portion of the agenda is sketch plan review for the Community Health and Safety Center being proposed at forty four oh one Seventy Sixth Street West, where we authorize the purchase of that piece of property. And we've got with us tonight Kerry Teague, our community development director, is going to introduce the topic. Trace Jacques, the architect that was selected by the interview group from B K V Group is with us, as is Rachel Feinberg, the project manager, Chief Slama, and some other folks from the fire department available for questions. So I'm going to turn it now over to Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, a site you're very familiar with. Tonight is your opportunity to provide comments on the land use portion of this project in your regulatory role. Trace Jacques is here from the B K V Group to present the detail of the project. The future process here would be a rezoning of the site. Currently it's zoned industrial. We would likely do a planned unit development here where we would create a zoning ordinance specific for this site, writing in institutional civic uses as a permitted use. The southern two thirds of the site, we don't need, don't necessarily need to nail down the detail of that in that first formal review process. But this evening is the opportunity for the council to provide comments on what you'd like to see there. This is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential uses available would include institutional, public civic type uses, parks, office, limited retail, and multifamily housing. So there's lots of opportunities here. Trace has a couple of options that you've seen in the past, but this would be a continuation of your discussion on those future land uses. With that, I will introduce Mr. Jacques.
Thank you, Director Teague. Welcome.
Again, my name is Trace Jacques. I'm with B K V Group, partner and senior design lead on this project. We're here really tonight in a public capacity to to share progress on this project. It's, it's a project that you, the city of Edina, are the owners on. So in the initial steps, we are here to basically inform city residents and the city council formally, publicly, of the progress to date. Progress primarily involves gathering a lot of input from various sources, from staff, all the way to the broader community as a whole, using the values viewfinder as a mechanism for that. The material that I'm going to be sharing tonight is really broad, almost abstract conceptual level. It's really meant to do our due diligence on a site that is within the district, Southdale area district guidelines, but is a site that's larger than the actual building that we'll be constructing in step one. I know you're all familiar with this and you're going to be familiar with this presentation. So I'll just, I don't want to waste time, but I also want to make sure that I'm covering all the pertinent points. So we have this formal presentation. Basically, Edina is evolving as a community. It embraces the challenges of reinventing itself in order to better serve all the citizens in greater ways. The image on the right is the generic site plan. It illustrates the generic size and a generic positioning on the site. A couple of things to note, it's a, it's a fairly large site, eight point zero two acres. It's four hundred and forty feet across in the east west dimension and almost eight hundred feet in the north south dimension. One significant feature is the existing wetland located in the southwest corner of the site. Obviously, a mission and purpose to establish a multi-use municipal landmark that is welcoming to Edina's diverse community and creates connections between the people and the many civic services provided. Connection is the key word. Project framing, we have several goals and objectives, drivers, stakeholders, what does success look like? I like the slogan on the image on the right, community is strength, be strong, let's look out for one another. Great. Concept statement, this really illustrates the first step or this initial building. City Vina plans to replace the existing fire station two with a new community health and safety center that will house the fire department and community health department, tasked with a goal of creating community landmark that is attractive, accessible, and interactive with the public while accommodating the growing needs of the fire and health department staff. The development serves as a connection point for the city and community. This project will be a catalyst for implementing the Southdale Design Guidelines within this particular region of the city. The project is planned to be two stories and include a community-focused indoor and outdoor space, a collection of spaces that are flexible, adaptable, and push the boundaries of development and design for buildings in general. We're serving down to the individual and we're serving the future. This is about taking care of one another. It's also about a place where community and city meet and interact in various different ways. One, one of the suggestions is that we have a multipurpose training room, which is what it's typically called, but it's really an opportunity for community gathering, both in an indoor space and an adjacent outdoor plaza. It could become a voting station down the road. Let's see. The values viewfinder really grounds itself on these four project pillars. Community engagement, health in all policies, race equity, and sustainability. Who we are, firefighters, health wellness workers, community outreach staff, city business employees, multi ethnic, we're multiracial, diverse economically in our backgrounds, and we're community oriented. What we want, multi-use facility, a welcome, that's welcoming and welcoming to all diversities, space that creates connections, pride in our civic place or civic facilities, authenticity is another good word. We go through these exercises and trying to understand the essence of place, the DNA that design narrative that'll eventually be here. The scribbles, somebody asked me, what, what is the scribbles? This is the promenade. Here's Southdale. We're over here. So there's actually something behind that. But there's also words, and these words are important. And this, it speaks to the, sort of the, the DNA or the logos of Edina as a, as a community. And I love this phrase, the blending the best of. I've heard blending the best of city and suburbs, the blending the best of, fill in the blanks. And that's a great starting point. And this project really is going to do that. So oftentimes, we, we put together a collection of imagery that speaks to potential architectural character, but also to the type of building we're, we're going to be creating here and the level of quality, which is very important here. So these are examples of different fire type stations, different civic structures. They speak to materiality, transparency, a sense of welcoming, a sense of civic pride, for instance. What is Edina? We all know what Edina is. It's all of these and many, many more aspects. Our site is located, actually in a currently what's basically a one story light industrial, but it will eventually become a neighborhood with mixes of uses. We've talked about the proud legacy of innovation and quality within the city. And again, these images are to talk about the guidelines as a series of experiences that overlay on top of each other. And this is about creating a rich, walkable, future vision for Edina's identity, basically. Initially, you all know, it was in this north south between France and York or France and Xerxes, and then it was extended to the west toward the Pentagon Park, Highway one hundred. So the guidelines have a lot of layers to them, a lot of different elements to them, but they're really about creating experiences. And the experiences can be urban, can be something much more park-like, something much more ranging in types of uses, building scale and size. It's, and it's quite oftentimes, as you know, if your familiarity with the guidelines, starts with what's called a street room. And our site is located in a location that has a lot of different influences overlaying it. The guidelines are meant as just that, guidelines, not necessarily hard and fast rules. And when you overlay a, a map that shows how these layers might transpose themselves, eventually it comes into, you know, existing lots and property lines and existing streets. And how can, how can these guidelines be adapted or taken the spirit of in these unique and individual situations? So again, the site today, site in its relationship to further landmarks nearby. Eventually, this will become a mixed use neighborhood. So here's some of those layers overlaying on the site. Purple indicates generic building, buildable areas. One of the main features cutting through the site is an extension of the promenade, which currently runs north south, an extension through our site, through this neighborhood to Fred Richards Park. So it's really about extending the character of the promenade through our site. Straight down view. Different characteristics for a primary east west street from a, different from a neighborhood street, and that's dimension, height, setback, transparencies, all of the above. So we presented, we explored dozens and dozens of different scenarios where, you know, we take this in an abstract level, like how would you, given, given some of these influences, these forces that are surround our site and cut through our site, how could that play out in a hypothetical scenario? One of the things that we have to maintain again is this green space. What can we do about that? How can that, how can we take advantage of that resource? In the first scheme, the assumption is that further development will basically be a series of tight streets and blocks. And in this particular scenario, you have to imagine perhaps there's a connection to France Avenue that runs alongside the promenade and continues through the site and connects and continues to the west. What that opens up for is an opportunity for an open green space on the southern safe third. Then our fire station, health and safety center, basically, it really only occupies the top third or so of the site. So that leaves an opportunity for some more building to happen on the site, or more green space. And that's where the conversation gets started. Some three dimensional views, the first option. This option took the basics of the program and said it put the public side and the community room, as I'll put it, on the east side. So something that orients itself a little more toward France. The second scheme that I'm going to share flips it, mirrors it, so it faces to the west. And I'll give the commentary on both. Both of these try to make some visual connection to the green space or the open space. There's a question on, well, what kind of building could this be? Is it a private development? Is it a potentially a public oriented building? We've had great comments about this could become a civic zone, for instance, since you own the land right now. There's other, other input that suggested perhaps one potential parcel could get sold off to recoup some of the purchase price, you know. There's a lot of different ways of looking at the opportunity. I'll just cut through. And this is basically showing the different steps within the site specifically, in which this whole site could be developed and maxed out in this full build out, something like this, without any other adjacent development happening outside of it. But it's basically setting the stage for things to happen in the neighboring lots. Option B says no road. The, the nature of the promenade is really a green pedestrian and bike oriented experience that removes the vehicle. And it's a much different type of experience. So it happens between buildings and it, it expands and contracts depending in width, depending on the different conditions. It engages water, blue zones throughout, and it also becomes opportunities for different outdoor type uses, public plazas, public art, those types of things. Because there's no sort of road cutting through this per se, it's just green space, you have the potential to develop a couple of parcels in this scenario. These parcels are represented more in sort of a civic type shape or form or scale, you know, perhaps an art center, perhaps a small theater, something like that. It could be a community center that takes up a bigger footprint. But the, the real goal is that there's no street running through on the east west promenade. And whether it goes straight through or takes a bend to the northwest, that's something to be, you know, to be sorted out down the road. This is that flip flop of the plan of our building that shows basically the public side on the west side. And the feedback we've got has been pretty uniformly that this is the right orientation, at least from a connectivity to the adjacent neighborhoods as they are right now and down the road. From a fire functionality, and Chief can speak more to this than I can, the, the calls, the fire trucks leaving out the front side, the seventy six side, more, most of the time, we'll be heading toward France. So there would be less conflict with, you know, people coming and going with that type of traffic movement when, when you have the public side, you know, on the west, not in the way of that, no conflict. So that's basically the differentiation in this particular study that we did. Now, parallel to this study, and when we meet next, we'll first meet with planning and then with, with city council, we're, we're actually dialing into a real building now. So this is more of a due diligence, almost a hypothetical, but it's really intended to spur conversation. And that's really what it's done, to be thinking about the future of a parcel of land that you own or a potential future, and just illustrate some possibilities, basically. There's a lot of potential on the site. And there's a lot of potential, obviously, for this first step, but also down the road. And it's really worthwhile having that conversation now because things happen not always as planned. They, they can happen rather rapidly, or, you know, over time. And new and better ideas might come along, you know, in the process. So again, the next step, we will be presenting an actual building design. We are in that process right now. We've collected a lot. We've collected a lot of great feedback. We're, we're formulating a very detailed floor plan strategy right now and site plan strategies. And we're also in the process of developing our exterior design and visioning for that as well, to conform as best we can to the district guidelines, which this building will have some differences to it because, as I mentioned at Planning Commission, and I, I know you said you listened to the, to the, or watched the video, listened to the video, the hearing, I mean. The, the, the guidelines don't really address civic architecture very well as standalone buildings. It addresses, they address density, and they address more of a mixed use and, and heavy on the residential and, and the usage. It addresses urban, urban design, but I think there's a unique place for civic architecture within the urban fabric. And quite oftentimes, urban civic buildings tend to have a different presence, a different type of setback, for instance, from the street, a different type of transparency, a different type of use, and, and use of public plazas and those types of things as part of their component elements to them. So I, I hope that when we're sending this through the design guideline filter, we're kind of thinking about this a little bit differently in that it has that, that sort of understanding, I guess. So I'm just putting a pitch in for that right now at this point. And with that, I'll end the presentation. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jacques. Member Risher.
I so appreciate that you said what you just said about the design guidelines and civic architecture. And as I look at option B, and I really do appreciate the merits of option B, I want to reach into the screen and pull that community health, safety center back into where there's green space behind it. And if we could take a look at, I think it was slides 15 and 16 that showed fire stations?
Yeah.
You'll note particularly if you look at the upper right, look at all that space, okay? And we're talking about a road that does curve, and site is very important. We want people to be able to see what's going on as they come around. And I just want to underscore that. And I, I think, you know, one of the things that you noted with the design guidelines is this emphasis on experience. And I hope that we can focus on people being able to have an authentic fire station experience.
Yes.
Okay? And if we can go to slide 16? Again, you see that open space. And one of the things that I keep, you know, thinking about is, it feels like we've almost entered into this time where we have this fear of open areas, and we've got to put as much as we possibly can into any parcel that we've got. And I really think there's a power to having that open absent area. And so that's just the one thing that I want to emphasize. And then, well, the other thing is, as I was looking at these plans, it really did dawn on me that we do have to be purposeful in our thinking in terms of where the community health center goes and the fire station goes. And I think it makes so much sense to have it, the fire station closer to France Avenue, but also just thinking in terms of lighting coming into the building. Who is living there 24/7, you know, and what kind of light and experience needs or should be emphasized there? Thank you.
And just, just to speak a little to the lighting without spending too much time, you know, for a civic building that has a community room or a flex room that's available, quite oftentimes it's more of a daytime-evening situation. So that would speak to the daylighting side favoring the west side, just, just a small nuance that you often don't think about. It's an evening building more than a morning building that way. But it's a, it's a 24-building, 24-hour building as well.
Good to know, and I don't know enough about that, so thank you.
One of the unique characteristics of this building that, you know, we're, it's a community-oriented building, but it's also a home at the same time. And this, the firefighters are living here. And there's such an extreme in, in levels of public and private in a place like that. So when we get into the actual building design and the architecture of it, you'll, we're, we're trying to be incredibly sensitive to those two very different realities in the ultimate design. But civic buildings also have an opportunity, or perhaps a place, to be that sort of unique object-type building, in a sense. We tend to recognize them as individual buildings and not a part of another building. And just given the nature of the, you know, how this site has been acquired and how, how it's been seen for this building type on it, it's, it seems that it might lend itself a little more toward that idiom and less to the mixed-use fabric kind of shaping.
All right, good, thank you. Member Pearson, Member Jackson.
Just, so just a quick question, I guess, or ask? I don't, I don't know which of it is, but you can decide. So I love all of these visuals. They're great. I think it gives a good sense of how you're thinking about design, especially at this point. The only, what I, what I would like for us to do is be clear about process. And so, I'm just making this up, I know I'll say it this way, when are we going to start building the fire station? And where is that going to be? And so we know what, where it's going to be relation to the, the lot, but I just want to understand that as we go through, like is the health, is that going to be phase two of three phases? And phase one is the fire station, and we're designing that, and we expect to start phase one next year and be done in a year? Like that kind of, I would like to understand that construct as we make these decisions on further design.
Want to talk to him?
See, that wasn't really a question, was it?
Yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Pierce. So the community health and fire will be together as phase one. So, and what we're projecting is bidding to probably be this fall, and then construction would be starting in the spring of 2024. And it'll probably be around 16 months, depending on what materials we do. So we're looking at move in for that phase, probably in the summer of 2025. So.
For which phase?
That's just going to be phase one. So that's the.
Oh, for that, phase one, got it.
Community health and fire. But kind of the, the purpose of, again, this discussion is to talk a little bit about the infrastructure as well. Because even though that is phase one, we have to set the foundation for phase two and phase three. So.
Thank you.
And speaking, speaking of infrastructure, I just wanted to make one point, and this came out in the, in the Planning Commission hearing. There was a, a comment about how busy 76th Street is. It's a wide street right now. It's denoted as a primary east-west street in the guidelines. But at this particular site, if you want to make it welcoming and, welcoming and accessible, and you live on the north side of that street, where do I cross? And so I'm just putting it out there as a potential infrastructure move, you know, perhaps one or even both of these potential street intersections that we're creating now may be signaled. Or at least have pedestrian crossing, flashing lights or something to make it more user-friendly.
Member Jackson.
Well, that's a wonderful segue. That was my first question. So I, I don't know, you know, whether it's something on, in the broader city or in this project, but I do want to make that connection happen because it's, it is a very dangerous road right now. And especially as we're building out Fred Richards, we want to make that easy to get around as pedestrians. So I really much prefer Plan B. I'll just say that. I like the orientation towards the neighborhood. But I also, when we talked in the, up in the work session, we, I asked you, you know, where we could walk, and you recommended the promenade. So we went down and we walked through the promenade. And you get to where, I think it's 7240 York, it's a series of apartment buildings. And that really, it's lovely for the people who live there. But as a public access to the promenade from York, that's what I fear, is where it just feels like a driveway. And at the end, you can see green space. And so that's why Plan B is so much better because it opens up that vista and you have the monument in the, in the, you know, just in the sketch, and it draws you in. And that's a much broader entrance to the green space than on the other side. So I, I have to say that I reinforced that I like Plan B. And, and I did find a place where you guys could get the feeling for what we were looking at. Let's see. Oh, and the other thing I like about Plan B is it doesn't run that promenade right over existing buildings. It runs it through a, a existing parking lot. And I think I, I'm much more comfortable so that we don't have our neighbors sitting there going, what's going to happen to my building? Am I, you know, is it going to go away? And so that, again, with Plan B, has the flexibility to do that. And then the other question is actually for the chief. One of the things that came up at the Planning Commission is, why is it this size? And I wondered if you could kind of talk about how this has been right-sized for what the three bugles, three bugles or five bugles? I couldn't remember.
Five.
Five. The Five Bugles report was for what the need is for this second fire station.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We had the study that was referenced from 2018, delivered in 2019, was the Five Bugles report. And that went through some programming based on kind of current conditions of, at that time in 2019. And, and a lot has changed, both in the world and in the world that we all live in. So I wanted to update on that. So the, the original study had program, not actual design of the entire spaces, but the programming included space for about 20,000 square feet total, roughly, I think 20,400. Our current station, as it sits today, through the, the same programming, is 26,000 square feet. That doesn't include all the walls. We're getting some details that, that the architect would explain what total square feet, just the actual programming of that. But the, the couple of things that are different with that is the public health division is a division of the fire department. They didn't have a home that was well-suited for them, and we see a, a lot of opportunity with aligning public health and emergency response and being proactive instead of reactive to the, the emergency service demands and some of the public health initiatives. So we saw that as an opportunity with this fire station construction to include that. So adding that public health division and the community health adds additional square footage to that. The Five Bugles report didn't include a community room in, into the project. It was just what does the fire station need at minimum? And so with a, a lot of discussion, both internal, external, identifying that there is and should be a space that the community can feel welcomed and, and utilize, we can cross that with, with training room and being able to use that dual purpose. So that adds additional square footage to that. And then the, excuse me, the study stated that we needed two ambulances and one engine space for two ambulances and one engine to accommodate that kind of call volume. And so one thing, when we went through the programming, was making sure that we can address the current call volume, but also, you know, future-proofing, and I use that in quotation marks because we never know what that means. But being able to accommodate an additional staffing that could be required, should we add in services, should different alternative service demands increase, that we have the ability to kind of accommodate that with a 50-to-75-year building, different than what happened with Station Two, where we kind of outgrew that too fast. So that's where the increase of sizes and the difference between the study and where we're currently programmed today.
Okay, so just to nutshell what you said, it covers what the Five Bugles report asked for. It looks at growth in the Southdale area, projected growth and projected needs in looking quite a wise into the future that you, that you, the best of your abilities is going to be able to address our public safety needs, not overbuild and not underbuild, sort of Goldilocks right-size build.
We are just looking for perfect.
But, but I'm accurate in saying that.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's an accurate, accurate summary of that conversation.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple of observations. It's always a pleasure to work with you, you know, the role you played here, you know, in our community. This building, too beautiful, Weston, DeBauer, you know, really first-rate work. So for me, these are kind of elements and observations mixed together, but for me, public buildings and, you know, I mean, those buildings owned by citizens of a town or a country, they should be of the finest form of architecture and materials that stand the test of time. And when we go to Washington DC, we go to all those places that are important to see and that we want to see that are new. Maybe the African-American Museum, maybe the Native American Museum, but it's, it's, it's really important, I think, that we build buildings that are remarkable and stand the test of time. This building now, I think it's probably 20 years old. And it's, even though it's modern, it's standing the test of time. And so as we look at all these beautiful designs on pages 15 and 16, or slide 15, 16, and I, and I'm guessing you're thinking about this already, is that there might be elements of this building that is so important and actually iconic to our town that you can, you can, they can manifest themselves in that new fire station some way, somehow. And I, I think you'll be thinking about that. This might be the practical side of me, but, and the member Jackson just mentioned something, I think I'm going to comment on in a minute that's really important. But I like the bike-ped promenade idea more than the internal street idea. And, and I think, is that B?
Yes.
Option B? And Member Jackson just mentioned something that was really important that I had forgotten about until the way she said it. And that was when we were doing both the Grand View study and we were looking at, oh, dare I mention the word, the lid. We were looking at putting green space over Highway 100 and connecting these east and west Edina. Some of the drawings had roads going right through Washburn, McCreevy. And that, it made them really nervous, even though they knew this was just an idea, it wasn't reality. But every other funeral home operator in the Twin Cities said, why would you think about going to Washburn, McCreevy? They're not even going to be there, you know, when the city gets done doing plans and whatever they involve. So I, I think you need to be really careful about starting to draw roads through people's property because ideas become reality, whether they ever become reality or not. But in some people's minds, they, they worry a lot and they get high anxiety over it, and we should be really cautious about that. A trail that's in there, which might sometime expand into a roadway is a different situation. I don't think it probably ever would because you've got a lot of properties there that would be difficult to navigate through. But I still like the idea of the, thinking about the bike-ped promenade winding its way some way, somehow through there, not a, not a roadway on an east-west basis. So I think it was back to, and I'm trying to remember what Member Risher said on slide I, I think I heard her say she likes this idea, but I want to make sure I understood it. And maybe it's, she said it a different way than I was thinking it, but as you were going through this, and I was looking at the different configurations, when you came to this one, and I could be on the second story of the fire station on the south end or on a rooftop facility, and I could see the green space in the wetland to the south, it was like I took a big sigh of relief as opposed to looking at a big building perpendicular to the building I was in blocking all of that view shed. So I, I like it, and is that what you were saying too?
Actually, I was saying with the community center, I want to pull it back so that we aren't, you know, creating, blocking, blocking vision as people walk there and helping to create the open pedestal, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
In front of the fire station. But, you know, as I look at the rest of the space here and concepts for what could happen, I really would like to encourage not putting anything in that space until we have secured a site.
a site for the third fire station. Because, you know, I think we need to keep that open land. We don't know what we're going to be dealing with, you know, and it is so hard to find places where you can put that third fire station for the northeast quadrant. And so I want to, I want to get that out there. The other thing is, my understanding, you know, last year, there were, there was a record number of calls to the station. And my understanding is that most of those come from residential. And I just, you know, the idea of, you know, maybe popping up a residential tower or something like that, high-density, just seems to be really kind of tone deaf. And we can't control what happens on so much of the land in Edina, but we can control what happens on the land that we own. And I really think, you know, we need to not put anything there until we have the land for the third one. And just recognize the stress, the volume, you know, all of that.
Yeah, I like the idea of concentrating on phase one, which is what we talked about. That's our main job, get this fire station built in the way we want it built. Beyond that, my experience is that as much as I like the notion of member Risher's advancing, you never know about development, where it might occur and what sequence it might occur, despite your, despite what you'd like to see as to how it's going to occur. So I leave that issue open for future discussion. I'm not ruling it out, but I just leave it open. The design experience guidelines, you've done a great job following those. And then, you, this is, this is kind of irrelevant, really, but when you were talking about, this is a place where people work and people visit on the first floor and people live, you know, it made me think about, well, maybe think about the White House, frankly. People work and visit on the first floor, people live on the second floor. That's not exactly what we got here, but I understand, it helped me understand the challenges that you have in trying to accommodate all these different uses in a single building of 25,000 to 30,000 square feet, which is, it'll be interesting to see how it unfolds. And I agree too, as on the public space, being on the west side, I think that's for fire orientation and the garages and getting in, equipment in and out in a hurry. But also the added benefit of, I think, you know, a lot of meetings for the public are later in the day and you still got west sunshine coming in those west windows. And I think that's still, that adds a nice effect for public, for the public. So anyway, those are just a few observations. I'm going to turn now to member Agnew. I didn't, when I, when I looked down at her before, she didn't think she had any comments, but she might certainly know.
You know, I don't think that I really have anything more to add than I did at the work session. Just to kind of reiterate, I do agree with the mayor and other council members on a preference for Site B, specifically the walkable promenade component of that. Really appreciate the visuals that you included. Want to echo the mayor's thoughts there too, of just like how iconic this can and should be. So just a lot of excitement for the way that you're visualizing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? All right, great. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your patience this evening as we work through some other things. Chief, thank you. Thanks to everybody on the team. Really appreciate it. We're heading in an exciting direction. I think everyone has a great amount of enthusiasm around this project for our town. Okay. I think we don't, I doubt we have any new communications that have come in since we started the meeting. So everything has been provided. I'm going to turn now to manager's comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I just have three quick legislative updates. The first is, I testified today in the Senate Capital Investment Committee on Senate File 1537. This is a bill that's being, that was authored by Senator Mann and Senator Lattes, the two senators that represented Edina. And it provides $10 million of fiscal support to the city for the project, for the Community Health and Safety Center project. They took it under advisement, and we'll hear back from them later. We have a similar call, excuse me, a similar hearing on Thursday. This project is, is for the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility, and this is an additional $1 million appropriation to help finish the project that we had previously received funding from them for. And the last item that still doesn't have a hearing but is finding its way to a hearing is a bill that would provide the city with funding to participate in a joint project with MINDOT to redevelop and replace the current pedestrian bridge over the crosstown to connect the north half of Edina to the south half of Edina at Roslyn Park. So that bill is being authored by Representative Edelson. It does not have a committee assignment or a bill number yet, but we should expect that will happen sometime, perhaps this week or early next week. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Member Agnew, anything for the council that you wish to address?
Yeah, so it was two Fridays ago, on March 10th, I got to attend an amazing event. It's called the Connecting with Kids Leadership Breakfast. And it was just so inspiring to see just amazing things that are happening in our community. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of express my appreciation to all the award winners there. We had Coach Tom Propson from the Edina High School football team. We then had the organizers for the TEDx Youth Edina, which was an amazing program that they put on. So Emma Flaherty, Charlie Green, Abid Hassan, Nick Prestis, and Elsa Utov were a part of that group there. And then Abid Hassan also got another award, which was just super impressive, for his work in Vision for All Minnesota, which is a nonprofit that he founded. And then the last award winner was Molly Seidel, who's worked with Habitat for Humanity and DECA as a leader. So just an inspiring morning that I was proud to be in attendance for. I think that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Member Pierce, okay. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the UN's IPCC came out with a new climate report yesterday, I believe. And it's pretty dire news that climate change is happening faster than anticipated. And it was very complicated, and I've been reading a lot about it, it's very recent. But what I thought I would add is, I reached out to manager Kate Ag, or not Kate Ag, Grace Hancock, and said, you know, I've got some ideas for some quick actions that people can take. A lot of what we do is looking on these long-time horizons, making the city walkable, looking at energy efficiency and land use, and it's, it's not going to happen immediately. But there are some things you can do right now if you're concerned about climate change, and I encourage people to think about it. First is to schedule a home energy squad visit. We have a subsidy here that people can get some help, as I believe it's a $100 visit, and the city will pay $50 to have them come out and look at your home and ways to save money. The second thing is, we can reduce food waste and reduce our carbon footprint. It's not just the food going into the landfill or into the compost, but it takes a lot of energy to bring the food to your table. So to reduce food waste, you know, buy what you need and eat what you want, but, but don't overdo it. And/or to do a one meat-free day per week is a recommendation that she had. Use refillable water bottles. Plastic uses a lot of fossil fuels to create. You can plant or care for a neighborhood tree, and you can also use reusable shopping bags. So those are some really fast things that will reduce our dependence on oil and make a difference right away. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Risher?
I want to give a thank you to Edina's Police Department and their Fire Department. I was able to spend two hours with dispatch, and that was really very helpful to me for understanding, really, the skills involved in working dispatch. I am so impressed by that, and it was an eye-opening experience. Also want to give a shout out to Pete Fisher, Operations Chief in the Fire Department, who spent time allowing me to tour the facility. And that was great. And I went on a run in one of the ambulances, and I also got to tour the ECMO mobile. When we were out on the run, I missed the induction ceremony for the three new firefighters. But that is all in the day, an experience of being at that facility, and it was just absolutely wonderful.
Good, thanks. On the fire station issue, I was just thinking about a dialogue we had about who in the metro that we're aware of has new fire stations we could go take a look at. Minnetoka has one, and then Manager Neil and I have been to a meeting down in Burnsville. And they've got a beautiful new fire station that, you know, we should probably take a look at both of those, make a little road trip or field trip down there and take a look at those, or look at those two facilities. Manager Neil talked about testifying. I was over on Tuesday on behalf of the MLC to testify on the street impact fee bill that was in the House Transportation Committee chaired by Frank Hornstein, testifying on behalf of the MLC. I think many of you know that cities can charge impact fees under statutory law for, you know, development that affects, that has freshwater implications, wastewater, stormwater, and parks. Those are all clearly allowed under statute to charge impact fees. But got a little bit fuzzy, but what some cities were doing was charging street impact fees based on a reading of the law. And there was a case involving City Woodbury. Harstead was a developer who sued City Woodbury a few years ago. And the Supreme Court said, well, no, you got to have clear statutory authority to start charge for street infrastructure. So to the extent you were in a greenfield development and there was 100 houses going in, and the, and the city was worried about the impact on their overall transportation system beyond their own development, how they'd have to affect intersections or traffic control, widening of roads, you know, they wanted to be able to charge the developer for those fees. And so that's the purpose of this bill, is to clear up that, that problem caused by the Harstead case. And our city attorney could speak far more eloquently on it than I could, but that was, we came out of that committee with an affirmative vote. And it's on to the next committee now, which I think is chaired by Representative Cleavorn out of Minnetoka, which I think we're hoping for a hearing there as well. Just a heads up on the tree ordinance that we approved. I got a call from Edina Realty. And with respect to that portion of the ordinance that requires a escrow, the question that they've raised, which is a legitimate question, is if we, if there's a, I'll use the example, the hypothetical of a large tree taken down, or it's a $20,000, based on the circumference, it's a $20,000 fee. They get $10,000 of it back when they plant the required number of trees. And then the other half of the escrow, as I recall, stays in the escrow account for two years to make sure that the trees that were planted don't die. And if they do die, then those funds could be used to replace trees. The question that Edina Realty raised was, well, who gets that money? If the developer puts the money in escrow and sells the tear-down rebuild or the new house to a homeowner, and now there's $10,000 sitting in escrow for two years, and the homeowner doesn't take care of the trees, what happens to that $10,000? So we got to figure out how to, how to solve that little issue. And maybe it's solved in the context of the ordinance, and I wasn't able to explain it well enough or understand it, but give that some thought. There may be some, some massaging that we need to do on that tree ordinance. And then Mary Brindl sent to Scott and me an email today. She is for our new members. Mary serves the City of Edina on what's called the Noise Oversight Committee at the Metropolitan Airports Commission. And her current term ends the end of June 2023. And she'd like someone from the city council to take over for her on the NOC. And the meetings take place every other month on the third Wednesday at Mac offices in South Minneapolis. The next meeting is May 17th at 1:30. Just give it some thought. And if you want to visit with Mary about it, or visit with Scott about it, he can give you more information on that. And I think some of you knew, over the last couple of years, I've had good fortune to get invited out to the Yale Mayor's College. Yale runs a two-day event, Yale Mayor's College, one day, the CEO Summit the next day. It's been in New York, but this time it was in Washington, D.C. They invite you out, they pay for everything. There were like 35 or 40 mayors there. And so on that first Tuesday last week, we covered issues again of public safety and infrastructure. And the professor that runs it uses a quasi-socratic method, I'll call it, for, for the lawyers here. And then on the, on the next morning, starting on Wednesday morning, we had, we got, we get sprinkled in with the CEOs that come. And so the big topics there were Ukraine, China, SVP Bank, or the SV Bank, the banking crisis. And that was all really fascinating because of the folks that were in attendance at that meeting. So we had the ambassador from the Ukraine to the U.S. there, live. We had the deputy mayor of Kiev there, live. It was, it was really a fascinating experience, and I'll tell you all more about it some future time when we're socializing. And that's it for me. Manager Neil, anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by a member Agnew, second by a member Jackson, to adjourn the meeting of the city council of the City of Edina this 21st day of March 2023. Any further discussion? Holes in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned at 9:48.